Good morning. We'll call to order this August 6, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters, Frost, Natoli.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Here.
You have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, August 9, at 6:00 PM, on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium and please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you very much. And before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask the audience to please join us in a moment of silence for those victims of senseless gun violence in El Paso, San Antonio, I mean, I'm sorry, El Paso, Dayton, and Gilroy. Thank you. Let's hope we never have to do that again. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk. For your items, Consent Matters, items 1 through 36, I do have a couple of notes. I have a request from staff to drop item 6, Sacramento International Airport Parking Exit Canopy and Terminal 8 Ground Transportation Shelters.
Senator. I'm willing to make the motion. I would want to ask that if we're going to drop this, and I'm not sure, not clear what the reason is, perhaps the CIO or his staff is going to explain it, but what I didn't see in the board letter was any mention of what we're going to do in terms of all-weather canopies for Terminal B rideshare pickup.
And that's part of the issue we started running into with the design, so we're asking to read, we're going to go back, redesign, and then come back.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I got to tell you, I'm receiving a lot more very passionate transmittals from my constituents as it relates to the fact that the Terminal B rideshare pickup drop-off location is exposed to weather, so I get a lot more in the winter, obviously. And I would like to see us come back and maybe have something a little more comprehensive that at least explains the timetable or the phasing that includes that component part.
We'll send that information out.
Thank you. Move to drop.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. I also have a request to hold item 22 until 2:00 PM. And this is the approval of contract award with Redflex Traffic Systems for provision of a red light photo enforcement system.
Mr. Chair, on that item, we just got some very last-minute questions at County Council. We need to look at it and come back at 2:00 PM.
Okay. Mr. Chair, since we're coming back at 2 o'clock, I was going to ask some questions. We can still, I'll still weigh in then. But as it relates to the budgetary impacts, again, maybe you'll have somebody here that can talk to that. It's laid out in the staff report, but I, again, the intent, obviously, is to, you know, have this hopefully pay for itself in that sense, and make for safer intersections. That's been, you know, obviously before this board on a number of occasions. But I'd like to, again, maybe be prepared to talk a little bit about that, some of the costs that were incurred, obviously, in this interim period, since we're now going back to the previous vendor, but also going forward, how we track some of that. So, if we could. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. And then I also have a request to drop item 23, Authorized First Amendment to Metro Airport Public Facilities Financing Plan Agreement with Relp Metro LLC.
Okay, I'll move.
Senator.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And that concludes the clerk's notes.
Okay. What is that noise? Okay, there it goes.
Must be somebody's phone.
Okay. I actually have one speaker slip I'll take right now for Davi Rodriguez on item number 35.
Item 35 is the ratification of appointments and reappointments for the Building Board of Appeals.
I'm sorry, I missed most of this.
Yes, I just called you up.
Item 35, Davi, which you signed up for.
Sorry, I missed my hearing most of all. Item 35, yeah. I'm a little confused about what, this is ratification of appointments and reappointments for the Building Board of Appeals, and it lists the people who will occupy the seats as general public members. I look at these names, and I see these people as basically government bureaucrats most of their lives. How can they be actual general public members? I mean, is it that way just because they no longer work there? I, some of these people, too, if they're going to be representing the general public, you would think they would be the general public. Mr. or Ms. Conley basically worked for the city in the building capacity for, I don't know, a long, long time. And I don't know who this Carlson is, honestly. I don't know. I couldn't find anything about him. Josh Pino, he's been an adversary of the public for decades. He worked as a code enforcement officer and such, and he was, had this long, colorful history of basically opposing the general public. And how he's going to be representing us on appeals matters kind of baffles me. While we're on this, Mr. Menard here, same thing. He's been a public official most of his life, although he was a contractor for the earlier part. And while we're on the subject of that, how is he representing us? This is a man who has had not one, but both of his contractor's licenses revoked. As someone who sat through proceedings trying to get a contractor's license revoked from the board, I'm telling you, it is hard. It took me years. And this person was bad. This, Mr. Menard, had two of his licenses revoked, never to be returned again, that I can see. So I'm wondering how they are actually representing the public, general public, as they say. They seem to be just more bureaucrats who will, you know, basically rubber stamp the board's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I could, just looking at the letterhead, is that letterhead not updated? Because we're talking about reappointment, it doesn't show as members of the board, even folks being on there, on the letterhead. The communication was dated July 17. So is this the total construct of the board with these ratification of these appointments? We're looking at five. I'm familiar, obviously, with the number of the names. But that letterhead doesn't show those folks as being, some of these are already incumbents in those seats.
That might be an oversight, and we'll get a revised memo to you.
And did we have these applications? Were there, behind them, were there actual applications?
I'll have to check with our applications processor. We have a deputy clerk that manages this. And so based on the letter that I'm looking at, the recommendation came in from the principal building inspector, and so I'll have to check that and see if the applications were there.
Again, you've kind of piqued my curiosity on this, because it's signed by the principal building inspector and the chief building official. Is that, isn't the chief building official the one that's in charge? Why do they co-sign? What's that about?
I, I don't know. Could we hold this until? Why don't we just hold aside them until?
Yeah, if you could, get a little more clarification.
Yeah. Let us find out why both of them signed.
Yeah, I don't have necessarily problems with appointments. I appreciate Mr. Rodriguez's comments, but I do think that it was pretty sketchy information that we have here, and it's just led us up to some questions, so we put it over.
So we're holding it till 2?
I'd rather continue till August 20.
Okay, that's fine. So is there a motion to continue?
I'll move.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, if I could, just on the, it was just ahead in front of me, on the sanitary survey for the Sacramento River, is that item 30? I'm sorry, it was ahead in front of me. Item 30, excuse me, item 30, if you could just read that into the...
Item 30, authorize the Director of the Department of Water Resources to execute First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding for the Regional Water Meter Replacement Program.
Not the right, I'm sorry, Flo, item 29. Okay, my apologies.
Item 29, you're acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency, authority to execute a memorandum of understanding for the Sacramento River Watershed Sanitary Survey 2020 Update and Annual Joint Source Water Protection Activities in the amount of $199,451 for a term of five years.
I guess my question is, is that we've had in recent years, because of some of the activity along the American and Sacramento Rivers, particularly as it relates to human activity and the, you know, bathing, as well as, I think, disposal, illegal as it is, of human waste. Is there some effort beyond just doing the survey to, because I know that there were citations by state agencies as related to some of the pathogens and other things that have showed up in higher levels in the water, and some has been attributed to human activity, some has been attributed, obviously, to animal activity. How does this comport with that? We're just part of an agreement, we're going to do the survey. Are we looking at that? Because I think as we struggle with some of the other issues related to activities, both in the Parkway, but certainly in other areas that feed into the watershed, our tributaries, creeks and streams, I'm just curious now, does this help inform us on some of those activities?
There's going to be a technical committee that's going to be formed out of the survey. And the technical committee, then, is going to be coming back with consultant recommendations on what kind of adjustments need to be made. So that's what this item starts that process. So I think any other, as they're doing the survey, which is name, it's more the technical consultant and technical things they're going to be looking at.
Okay, because we're in for 200,000 bucks on this, and as I understand, our cost share of this, the, and it talks about, you know, joint source water protection activities. And I think that, you know, we're, you know, knowledgeable enough, at least from the standpoint of some of the, the information that's come forward over the last couple of years. And I guess I'm just curious as to, what, what does this result in besides doing the survey? Does it come in with recommendations?
The consultant will have recommendations.
And will they come, will those come back to this board then, Nav? And if not, because I don't want that just internalized. I think that, you know, in light of some of the other things we're struggling with, it would be helpful for this board to have the ability to, to see what those can come back beyond just the technical aspects of those, of that survey.
If we're not doing that, we'll make sure we communicate that back to you.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Anybody else?
I have no more cards for the public. Is there a motion?
Move the consent calendar.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, with the exception of items 6, 22, 23, and 35. We took separate actions on that, and we're holding item 6 and, yeah, we're holding item 6. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would like to welcome up Chris Flores and Jeff Gasaway to the podium, if you're here. You are. For those of you that aren't following the agenda as closely, we have just appointed Chris Flores as the Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures, as well as Jeff Gasaway as Director of General Services for the County of Sacramento. Congratulations I'd like to say a few words, please. Now is your opportunity.
Well, thank you, members of the board, and I want to thank Mr. Gill for this opportunity to serve Sacramento County as the next Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gasaway?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the board, Nav Gill and his executive cabinet, as well as the dedicated staff and general services for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, congratulations to both of you. Thanks for being here.
Thanks.
Okay, item 37, Service Award Recognizing Diana Jen for 35 Years of County Service.
You've got quite a fan club here today, Diana. I see a lot of familiar faces here.
Yeah, I think that happens with 35 years of service with the county. My name's Frank Ross, and I'm an HR Manager 3 with the Department of Personnel Services. It's my pleasure to present this service award to Diana Jen. I've known her for many years, but it's been the last five years that I've worked directly with her, and I've got to see her dedication firsthand. Just want to tell you a little bit about Diana. She started as a summer youth employee with the Sacramento Public Library after high school. She worked her way through college, from Sacramento City College, Sacramento State University, and she received a grant to graduate school at USC. And she majored in library science, and so she began her career with the county as a librarian in April of 1984. And I'm not sure how many of our staff were born at that point.
Born.
Most of them were, but there was a few that I think weren't, and they're right back there. As I said, she worked as a librarian for many years, and then she transferred to the county's animal shelter as an administrative services officer. She also went to probation after that as an associate admin analyst, and then she was hired by the Department of Human Assistance as a senior personnel analyst. She's currently with the Department of Personnel Services as a human resources manager, and she has served as, she's on her third three-year term as a trustee on the Board of the Sacramento County Employee Retirement System, and she's served as the president of boards of the Friends of the Sacramento Public Library and for her Seroptimist Group. She definitely believes in giving back to the community and has donated to various causes, including $10,000 to the Central Libraries Capital Campaign. That was over a few years. It wasn't just one year, but that's a lot of money to donate. And she has also given to DHA scholarships and numerous contributions to other organizations, and even to our own office, where she's been very generous, buying us office T-shirts for all of us. There actually really weren't T-shirts, they were polo shirts. They were very nice, and, and we appreciate that. And this, just working with her has been really an awesome experience, I would say, because she has everybody else in mind all the time, and it's always her last. And I've actually had to tell her, do some things for yourself. And so I'm hoping that she doesn't continue for another five years of the county to make it 40. I'm hoping, but I'm not trying to push her into retirement, but you got to live for yourself at some point. And she's put in 35 wonderful years of the county. So I just want to present this service award to her. Signed by Nav Gill.
Let you do that.
Well, thank you, Frank. I appreciate that. You know, one of the things, the joy about working for the county is meeting the great people and working for the departments that I have worked with. I had planned to, I planned to stay a little longer. I told someone, hey, if I'm here when I'm 70, just shoot me. But on the other hand, that's workplace violence, so we can't do that. I can't seem to pull the trigger on retirement. When I was 55 and a half, okay, that's it. I had figured out my mortgage to be paid for. When that time came, I just couldn't leave yet. And over a decade later, I'm still here. I started collecting Social Security last year, and I still can't do it. But I think it's getting closer to that time. I'm the oldest of five siblings, and three of them in the middle have retired. My brother Marvin and my sister Debbie are here today. And, you know, I just, something's wrong with this picture, right? But, you know, I still enjoy my work. I want to thank the county for my service award. I got a smart watch. Thank goodness my staff are smarter than the watch in me, because they, they figure out how it works. And I want to thank all those who came down for this presentation, and I'm very honored. So thank you.
Thank you very much.[1185.01][1185.01](APPLAUSE) Supervisor Natoli, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Diana, I've had the good fortune, as have others on this board, of working with you for a number of years. And certainly, as you've kind of joked about, you know, putting time in, it's been a lot more than that, I think, as Ross said, that you continue to make important contributions, both in the workplace, but certainly in the community. And I know I've enjoyed, you know, the opportunity and many events throughout the years to see your work, both on the ground, but also just the leadership, and I think the inspiration you provide to others, because you're a motivator. Sometimes you do it quietly, other times you're out front when you need to be to do that. And I think just the realm in which you work, certainly in public service, but the various facets, you know, as you've moved and promoted and so forth, you know, you left a, left a pretty strong imprint on those, you know, those parts of our organization. But overall, you've been a real tremendous public servant, and hopefully you'll continue for a few more years. And when you decide, obviously, to retire, you'll know it's time. But until that time, continue to do the good work, and thank you so much, and God bless you and your family for all your work.
Oh, thank you very much. You know, Don, five years ago, we lost my brother-in-law, and we are so thankful you attended to services. And it's amazing how time flies. So certainly we appreciate the service of the Board of Supervisors. You know, I know Supervisor Serna raises money for the DHA County Scholarships. I've seen Supervisor Kennedy at various events. I think we talked a little while at Habitat for Humanity. So certainly, all the time that you guys put in is very appreciated also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1289.12][1289.12](APPLAUSE) Now, the representatives of the Sacramento Public Library Foundation would join me at the podium.
So item 38 is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing September 8, 2019, as Sacramento County Literacy Day.
Hi there. If, if we could just make a little introduction, that would be awesome. My name is April Javist, and I am here, I'm the Executive Director of the Library Foundation, and we are the convener here in Sacramento for the National Campaign for Grade Level Reading. And with me today are my kids, Ty and Giselle, my staff, Dan Zabar. We also have here Lori Hawk from Murphy Austin. We have James Derringer from Downey Brand, and also the Foundation Board President, Julius Austin, and I think a lot of his interns from SHRA Promise Zone, and also the foundation. We have Delia Estrada from Golden One. Thank you for all your support, Golden One. Ian Hadley from 916 Inc., Michael Lynch from Improve Your Tomorrow. I hope everybody's saying hi. And last but not least is Jody Nelson, who would like to make a quick statement. She is with Sac State.
Thank you. On March 3, a group of approximately 30 Sacramento citizens came together to talk about creating a children's literacy movement in Sacramento County. The group included literacy providers, the library, educators from K-12 and higher ed, corporate and individual philanthropists, and policymakers. Today, we ask that all policymakers be aware of how critical it is that our children are able to read, all of our children. After years of effort, Sacramento has moved the needle from a rate of 34% of our children reading at grade level to 45%. And while the gains are good, they clearly are not enough. Reading is the gateway to becoming a productive, engaged member of society and a voting member of that society. By establishing September 8 as Sacramento Literacy Day, we align with the International Literacy Day, and we create an opportunity for everyone to focus on this problem. And this problem belongs to all of us. Along with Sacramento County's proclamation made today, the cities of Sacramento, Elk Grove, Citrus Heights, and Rancho Cardoza have all agreed to make the same proclamation. This is the beginning of everyone realizing that literacy is a problem in our county, and that it is critical to a healthy, productive, and equitable society. And more importantly, that we must actively engage in fixing this problem now. Thank you.
Thanks, Jody. Well, I normally go first, so now the anticlimactic part of the...[1471.23][1471.23](LAUGHTER) So I'm going to read a few of the wherashes, as this is an important subject for all of us. Whereas Sacramento, I'm sorry, whereas September is National Reading Month, and whereas September 8 is International Literacy Day, whereas reading and writing are fundamental tools needed to participate fully in our, in our country's democracy, and whereas reading and writing are essential to assessing new skills in continuously changing technical and service-oriented economy. Whereas literacy is an equity issue affecting three out of five Sacramento County children who are not reading at grade level and face greater barriers to higher education and career development. And whereas children who do not read on the grade level by fourth grade are four to six times more likely to drop out of high school. And whereas Sacramento has all of the ingredients to be a leader in literacy, whereas a thriving, growing, learning community is a community of readers and writers. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California does hereby recognize September 8, 2019, as Sacramento County Literacy Day, and urge Sacramento County residents and civic organizations to read, donate time and resources, and volunteer to create a culture of literacy for all members of the community. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors on August 6, 2019. Thank you for everything that you all do in the community. Thank you for what you're doing for our kids, and thank you doing for the future of Sacramento County.[1559.36][1559.36](APPLAUSE) Where's this go?
Chair Kennedy?
Yeah, we need a picture.
Is it possible to, to make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to thank April and the foundation for coming out, and all of you for all your work in promoting literacy. I happen to serve on the Library Authority Board, and I'm really proud of what the library is doing to also promote literacy. I wanted to give a shout-out to them for their work, their 200 storytimes per month that they're doing, and their partnership in outreach with schools, partnership with the Friends of the Sacramento Public Library with our Book First Project, to make sure that Sacramento County first graders are receiving books and able to keep them. They say we learn to read from zero to grade three, and we read to learn after that. And so those first years are critical, and the work that you're doing is meaningful, extremely meaningful. So thank you so much for, for all that you've done to help the library authority and for your work with literacy.
Thank you for your work.
Right, who can we get to take a photo?
Continue. Oh, she wanted to get somebody to take a photo. I didn't know if you... Oh, I guess maybe, okay. No, I said you were looking for somebody to take a photo. I was just looking to recruit somebody for you.
So that we could get all you guys in it?
Sure.
Come on.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call up.
Hey, item 39 is the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development Impact Fee Program 2019 Update. The environmental document is an addendum to final supplemental environmental impact report. Approve the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development Impact Fee Program 2019 Update. Approve the revised Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Schedule. Approve the revised Figure A 1.2 of North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Public Facilities Financing Plan. And you are also introducing an ordinance admitting certain sections of Chapter 16.81, Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development Impact Fee Program 2019 Update, waiving full reading and continuing to August 20 for adoption.
Kamal Atwal, Senior Civil Engineer with the Office of Development and Code Services and County Engineering Division, Special District Section. Can I have my slideshow We're here to present the North Vineyard Station Fee Program Update.
program was designed to be updated periodically. Currently, the program has 852 net acres remaining to be developed. It is planned to have 3,281 residential dwelling unit equivalents and 38 acres of non-residential uses, which includes office and commercial. The county has been working on the fee program effort for several years. The fee program effort was coordinated with county departments, North Vineyard Station stakeholders, developers in that plan area, regional transit, and the South Gate Recreational and Park District. The fee program includes the roadway component, drainage lane, park was adopted last year, and then transit facilities. The document was prepared by the county consultants, and the fee burden was proportionally assigned to the remaining development in the plan area. The figure here is the boundary for the North Vineyard Station Fee Program. To the north is the Florin Vineyard, sorry, the Florin Road, and to the south is the Gerber Road, and on the westerly side is the Eldred Creek is the boundary, and Bradshaw runs north-south in the middle of the project, and then Vineyard is the easterly boundary of the plan area. Currently, the Vineyard Road doesn't exist between Gerber and Florin. Basically, it's the extension of Vineyard connecting to the Knox Road. This is the roadway CIP. This figure basically summarizes the improvements currently programmed in the North Vineyard Station Fee Program, which includes the onsite major roadways, intersections, improvements, and also the offsite roadways, as shown here in this exhibit. It has the onsite traffic signals, pad signals, drainage crossings, as well as railroad crossings. Next slide is the drainage lane improvements. This includes the outside travel lane on major roadways, as predicted in this exhibit. The gray segments are already built, and the remaining colored segments are yet to be built. As part of the approvals, we are requesting the board to approve the reduction in the logical segment requirement. So basically, by approving this exhibit, we're amending the reference to the conditions that every rezon has in this plan area, which will allow the DOT the flexibility to condition projects based on the location of the project, and the limits are defined by property lines or nears minor street intersection or a railroad crossing. If you're at the corner, then you either do one of the segments, and then along your, the drainage along the other road. So total of a quarter mile is being asked to build. Any questions on this one?
I do have a question, Mr. Chair. Yeah, come on. Again, I know this has been discussed for some time. I guess I want to be clear then. This gives the flexibility to staff within the fee program and within the roadway oversight, whether it's Department of Transportation or others. Were not some of these conditions, zoning conditions though, and maybe this is for Krista, I don't know, that were the logical segments and the thresholds, were those not called out for in the zoning agreements? And if so, do we have the flexibility then to, which I'm fine with the flexibility, I just want to be sure that, you know, that whatever message is sent here, that we have the ability to make those accommodations, half mile versus a quarter mile?
Yeah, the zoning conditions basically have this reference, so we're amending the reference, which allows us the flexibility to change from a half mile to quarter mile.
So you're amending the reference, though, in the, so this is a zoning changed?
Yeah, it's the, every rezon refers to this figure in the PFFP, and we're amending the figure that is approved in the PFFP.
Okay, so you can do that by amending the figure versus the condition, because that's the reference, that's the reference point. Okay, I just didn't, again, I know folks have talked with me about this over time, and so that's how we're getting to the ability to have the flexibility.
Yeah, we met with the county council, and that was the approach that we agreed on. Planning was on board as well, so.
Okay, so when we show logical segments, you've got a diagram up there right now, and the, and you show what's been constructed thus far, and, you know, what's left to be constructed. Those fronting properties and/or those, you know, developments that are internal that would, you know, get to, you know, have that responsibility, are, is there going to be some certainty that you're not going to have these small gaps? That you're going to, you know, you get a quarter mile, but then, these segments are broken out, so these are actually, these segments are denoted, so if you go yellow, purple, yellow, purple, whether they're constructed or not, those are going to be done, and those are the segments. And so anything intervening in between that, you covered all the drainage properties then?
Yeah, DOT will ensure that the segments are done logically. Matt, do you want to chime in on this, or?
Yeah, I mean, basically, we went and put this figure together based on, when the update occurred, a lot of the stuff in gray has been completed already. That left us with the remaining portions that are shown in various colors there. We broke the, what used to be the half-mile minimum length down to a quarter mile. In many, many locations, we were able to have some of these be located along property lines as well. So we think that when these properties come in, we'll have less resistance to be able to get those done and get quarter mile. We, like Kamal said, we added some flexibility for around the corners. We had situations in the past, as you are well aware, where you had two half-mile segments come together at a corner. That's a little bit heavy of a lift. So we added some flexibility so staff can say, do your drainage on both corners, and we'll assign one of the other remaining two legs to you, which would leave the other leg for future. But yes, basically, assign quarter mile, and this gives us some more flexibility if it makes sense that that's 1,000 feet, or if it's 1,400 feet. We've got flexibility. But yes, we'll get those pieces as they come.
Okay. So one other question I have relates to the railroad crossing, Waterman, and how that's accounted for in the fee plan, because I think it was initially contemplated to be an at-grade, and not because of the lack of efforts, both on the department side, infrastructure finance, but also obviously some of the developers out there. My understanding is there has been no concurrence with those that govern that, and so that they're calling either for, you know, a separated, basically, crossing, either under or over. So how's that being accommodated in this, in this fee program? And secondly, how and when will that get constructed? Because that's no small feat. I know that line's out of use, it hasn't been abandoned, but it's certainly been out of service now for many, many years. And so, because otherwise, Waterman stops at the railroad tracks, so.
Yeah, so the segment that's identified in blue, it's now moved from the North Vineyard Station program, and it's programmed in the SCTDF countywide regional program, and it'll be done as a public project instead of a developer project, because the cost is, I believe, over $6 million for that improvement.
Over what?
Over $6 million.
I would say that's probably a conservative estimate, but, so, what's the timing for that? That's a main artery in all our planning documents. We've looked at Waterman Road as being a, you know, between Bradshaw and Elko, Florin, South Watt, as being, you know, a major collector street. Maybe it's arterial, I don't know what you've got categorized.
Yeah, the timing will be based on the SCTDF's priority projects.
Okay, but that's, you're not getting to the, so maybe somebody, Kamal, I get that, but my point being is that if that doesn't get constructed, you're going to, you know, and if the right of ways being held, granted, we all thought it was going to be at-grade 20 years ago, but it's, you know, for, again, people have tried to keep that at-grade, but we're not getting, we haven't getting any traction there. But building an overpass or an underpass in a neighborhood, because you're getting houses pretty close there now, that's a big deal. And so I guess, you know, it's one of those improvements that if you don't get it in fairly soon, then you're going to get some pushback from folks who may want the street through, but don't want, you know, either an overcrossing, looking down on their houses. I mean, that's what we've tried to guard against over time. We did that in Laguna, we built those crossings, and then, you know, people knew it was there. You come in afterwards, like with the urban interchanges we were going to do, they become nothing but a battle. So where are we at with timing? That's my question.
Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation. We, Kamal's correct, it's in the SCTDF program as a project, and we are looking at the timing along with all the other county priorities. In addition, the fee program has money that, set aside for SCTDF projects, so it becomes a discussion, but we're looking at a solution for it. But as far as timing's concerned, it goes along with all the other county priorities.
Okay, Ron, I appreciate that, so, and we're not all about that today, but I do think we need to have a conversation here at the board about that, because, you know, whether you got it in the three-to-five-year plan or five-to-10-year plan, notice to residents and such, because when houses are bought, people get used to a road being, I don't care how big it is, being, you know, stopped on either side of that, you know, the folks that built the homes, they're, you know, they're long out of the picture, and it's this board. And again, you know, we, none of us have enough experience with that, that if we don't get, you know, make it clear to folks what it's going to be, because I know we've been going back and forth, whether it's, you know, underground or above ground, but when you build, you know, when you go over a railroad, those are high overpasses, and, you know, even if you held right of way, it gets to be a very, you know, a difficult decision. It becomes very political at times, and it doesn't matter how much people want to get from here to there. And so that's why some of that infrastructure is important to get in at the time. At-grade is something different, but if we're going to have to grade-separate, and I know they still hold that as a high-speed rail corridor, I doubt that that's ever going to happen, but ours, we wanted alternatives. I guess I would just say that, you know, before we go too far, you know, we can, this is coming to us today, obvious adjustment to it, but now it's in the overall, it competes through all the dollars and all the districts, the countywide development fee, and there's a lot of competing priorities. And so we moved it from a localized project because of the cost, but I guess I'm going to send the warning signal really loud and clear today, that that needs to be addressed, because otherwise, some future board is going to have a big fight on their hands putting that overcrossing in, particularly if you go above, but even going down below, because you've got to hold back, you know, quite a ways, and that activity becomes, you know, pretty impactful on a neighborhood, even though when you're done, obviously, you get that through. But people are going to get used to Waterman Road stopping at the railroad tracks. And so I got, that's my point here today, is that we need to have an approach that, you know, that gets us to some discussion before we get too far down the road here, and you've got, you know, 2,000 houses out there, and folks say, no, that's not going through, and then you're going to have a big battle here at the board.
Yeah, I do share your concerns, and we're working on solutions, and we'll bring those solutions back and keep you abreast.
Okay, and I think notice to folks, because it hasn't been real clear, you know, that Waterman shows going through, but you show a blue line on the map, that doesn't, or just a line, it doesn't tell you what's going to be there. So I think, you know, keeping people informed, so that at least they're on notice. You know, what the approval plan showed was for an at-grade. Now we're showing for grade-separated, albeit we tried to do something different there. And so that needs to be disclosed to homeowners, but also as we have public meetings, and, you know, our CPAC and so forth, because that, you know, that changed circumstance. You know, that's a big deal for folks. And yet, we want, you know, the connectivity, it's very important. Waterman Road's a main thoroughfare through there, so.
And as we come up with the solutions, we will have a significant outreach component to the delivery of that project. So we'll keep you updated.
Okay, all right, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Superintendent Serna.
Thank you. So I have two questions. The first has to do with the fact that we're doing, we're going to be doing something very different in terms of the calculation, in terms of drainage fees. We're going to be moving from an acreage basis to a DUE basis, which I think is a much more accurate way to reflect the impacts that are going to come from any given parcel. I assume that that is a kind of an industry standard at this point? That's my first question.
Yeah, for a Vineyard program, we did it based on traffic. This was an older program. It was based on acres. As part of this update, we have converted it into a traffic-based assessment.
So my second question has to do with process in terms of the future of the project. And it has to do with the fact, and it goes back to this change of practice, to apply this to a DUE basis versus an acreage basis. What do we have in place today that would be automatically triggered should a property owner, for whatever reason, come in with a suggested zoning change? So in other words, a change that affects the density of their project. Obviously, it wouldn't affect necessarily their acreage. And with that change in density, obviously, you're going to have to recalculate what those fees would be. You wouldn't have to do that under the previous regime of applying this on an acreage basis. So what do we have in place to guarantee us and the public that we're going to continue to collect appropriate resources to address traffic impacts in the future, should there be a request for a density change?
So basically, when the fee program goes into effect in October, pretty much every development will be subject to the DUE rates as prescribed in this ordinance. So we will do that conversion then. So it's, basically, we will lose the acreage-based method then.
Yeah, you'll do it then, but my question is, what about five years from now? What about 10 years from now? Is there going to be something in place that reminds someone, oh, this is, the denominator's difference. It's a DUE factor, not an acreage factor, because that will change the amount of the check that they write, and it wouldn't necessarily affect them in the previous regime when it was done on an acreage basis. You can change your density all day long, right? But it's still, it still would have been based on acreage. Now it's going to be based on DUEs.
Yeah, we do all the calculations for the fee program, so we monitor all that. It will be based on traffic.
I'm still not hearing what I want to hear.
I think what you want to hear is that, yes, we will keep in our files that the denominator's changed, and here's a new denominator.
Yeah, because that is going to change now. It affects the arithmetic.
No, that's what we're getting at. Absolutely.
And it's memorialized in the ordinance, as well as in the NEXA study why the switch has occurred.
Superintendent Tolle. Yeah, just a follow-on question to some of my previous comments. So there was money being collected, I guess, in the previous program. It went to, obviously, improvements as it came along for that grade crossing. And I think it was estimated at one time to be between $408 or $1,000. And so is the entirety of that cost then now gone to the SCTDF program, and there's no longer any apportionment? And so their apportionment for any new development in this area basically goes into the countywide, so it just, so that money kind of gets blended with everything else?
So the mitigation, the cost contribution necessary for them to meet all their mitigations are being collected in either, between the two programs. And so there's accrediting that takes place. And so the money, there's money in the fee, in the plan area that Kamal's talking about that can apply to SCTDF projects, and then there's the, which is 30%, and then there's the overall SCTDF program. And so the delivery of that project will be prioritized through both programs.
So the cost is being signed in 30/70 split? Is that from what's being paid by new units here?
There's 30% of the fee program that also can be utilized for SCTDF projects.
Okay, so, again, I'm not going to repeat what I said a moment ago, but as a part of an overall planning effort, we spent hours in these chambers, obviously, through good times, not-so-good times, you know, obviously, Lennar's been a primary builder, others have built. But that was contemplated as an important, you know, and now to put it in that countywide competition for things in all five supervisors' districts that were developments occurring, puts it a little different, because that's a major arterial thoroughfare in that community. And so now you've put it into this countywide competition, so it's going to compete against other projects, which, you know, that was contemplated as a part of that plan. I think it presents a little different question. I mean, you're going to come back to us, but I just, we need to take a look at that. And again, I don't, you know, I don't want to take something away from the other four districts, and I don't necessarily want to burden everybody in this area, but, you know, if that lags behind, and you're 10 or 15 years building that, meanwhile, you've got this congestion on Bradshaw Road and South Watt, and, you know, you're talking about Vineyard Road going into some future date, and then you, you know, deflects to Excelsior and Grant Line. I just think, you know, we need to spend a little more time focusing. And again, I haven't talked with you recently about this, and I don't want to get lost in the weeds, though, I guess I'm going to say that. This is an important improvement, and I don't know that, you know, necessarily needs to compete against everything else in the county, because it's a big chunk of dough. And if you're, you know, and yet, it's a critical improvement for the overall build-out and development of this area. And it was contemplated in the planning, we spent a lot of time talking about alignments and, you know, getting across. I can't, you know, none of us can you know, deflects to Excelsior and Grant Line, I just think, you know, we need to spend a little more time focusing, and again, I haven't talked with you recently about this, and I don't wanna get lost in the weeds, though, I guess I'm gonna say that. This is an important improvement, and I don't know that, you know, necessarily needs to compete against everything else in the county, because it's a big chunk of dough, and if you're, you know, and, and, and yet, it's a critical improvement for the overall build-out and development of this area. And it was contemplated in the planning, we spent a lot of time talking about alignments and, you know, getting across, I can't, you know, none of us can help that the, you know, the PUC is being, you know, you know, very bullheaded, in my view, about, you know, getting at grade crossing, but that's the way it is, and, and, and so I think we need to spend a little more time, because again, I don't wanna compete against four other districts for that, for that funding, for an improvement that was really more localized at the time, it was taken into account in a large plan area. That was a specific planning process we went through, that's an important piece of that, and so the fee update, I'm trying to keep fees reasonable, so we can keep building, and, you know, it doesn't load it up on the houses and so forth, and yet that's a key, key improvement for that area, so, bless you. So, anyway, I just, I make the point because I'm a little concerned about how this has gotten transferred now, and then it puts it in competition with other needed projects throughout the county, and yet it's an improvement that's more localized, it has some, you know, a little more regional in that area, but, so, and again, I don't wanna be, you know, having to be competing for projects that need to be done elsewhere for capacity, because this is an important and critical one, so. So, Ron, again, I guess I would maybe ask, we could come back at some point and talk about focusing on this as it relates to that particular improvement in, in, you know, timing and how we think we're gonna pay for it, and not, you know, pose it against other critical projects in the county. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions from the board? We have one public comment card from Bob Shattuck.
I'm still going through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's more to it. Transit improvements are basically a half-acre park and ride lot, and it provides 50 spaces, and there's five interim bus stops being programmed in the Transit CIP, and the remaining facilities are funded through the Sacramento County Transportation Fee Program. Next slide is the summary of the cost for all four components. Roadways at $76.6 million CIP, Frontage Lane is $13.3 million. Park was adopted last year, it was $42.8 currently, with the adjustment done in March, and then Transit is $561,010. Administration component was reduced from 5% to 4%, and then total CIP cost for all components excluding the admin portion is $133 million and some change. Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee will, funds basically the regional roadways and trails. Plan area will receive overlapping credit for the overlapping facilities in the, both programs. This is the sample, not a sample, actually, the comparison between the existing DUE rates and the proposed rates. Existing was $44,271, and the current proposed program is $34,486. I'll show you why the Frontage Lane went down, as we discussed, due to the change in the DUE factors, and the program fees are due at the building permit, prior to issuance of building permits, and every March, this program will be adjusted based on the average of E&amp;R's CCI indexes. And the program is designed to be updated every five years, so we'll be back with any changes to the land uses, as well as the construction cost changes. Next slide is the sample projects. We did the calculation for RD5 and a commercial project, Zoned LC. If you compare the, both of the rates, the overall rates are going down for RD5 project. It's slightly less, but not as much. Same thing with commercial, goes from $38.52 down to $38.19. Next slide is the summary of the overlapping facilities. Roadways is $45 million, overlap with the SCTDF. Frontage Lane is $13.3 million. Trails is $1.8 million. Plan area, total overlap is $60.8 million, and divided that by plan area DUEs, plan area will receive a $15,666.33 per DUE credit in the SCTDF program for program facilities in the North Wind Station plan area. So the reduced SCTDF fee will be $1,700 and some change. Next slide is the, basically summing up the reduced SCTDF and the remaining Transit component and the admin, and the total North Wind Station program fee, that sums up to be $37,000 and some change. And the credit policy will currently have, we withhold 10% for the county projects, that's gonna switch to 30/70, so 30% will be held for county priority projects, and then 70% will be given in fee credits for developer-constructed projects, and then remaining will come in based on the, basically when they are in the queue and how much money we have in the plan for the reimbursement. That, that 70% is basically a 50% of that amount that was previously discussed for the overlapping amount, so that's how we got to that. Next slide is the actions. Determine the environmental, environmental determination is adequate as appended to the staff report, and open the public hearing.
We're ready to open the public hearing.
Yes, okay, thank you. Then with that, we will open up the public hearing. I do have one card from Bob Shattuck.
Chair Kennedy, members of the board, I'll be quick. I'm Bob Shattuck, representing Lennar today. I just wanted to let you know when the outreach process for this was going on, we had several serious questions that required a little bit more information, and we just wanted to thank the county for taking those questions seriously and walking us through the information, and all the questions were answered to our satisfaction, so thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Is there any other member of the public that'd like to address this at this time? Now we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question about that final slide, which had at the top, it's not up there any longer, but at the top it said environmental determination.
Yes.
The board letter has recommended actions that include recognizing, that's the operative verb, the final supplemental environmental impact report. Is, I'm looking at county council, is there, what are we, we being asked to do on the?
Yeah, so it is really, literally recognizing the prior certified FEIR and, and an addendum, so.
Okay, so we're not determining anything?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question, because I see it's redlined in the reference we have now to strike through. How are we dealing with accessory dwelling units, since we've had changes in state laws, since adoption of this plan? Obviously, we've dealt with those in different constructs, depending upon square footage, and they've been seen to be subordinate, obviously, to the primary dwelling. Some of those are allowed by, by right, up to a certain square footage, and others require use permits, so how are they being dealt with as it relates to calculation of fees?
So if they're building an accessory dwelling unit in an ag rez zone, they're exempt from the fees.
Okay.
If they are pulling a building permit, then they are not. Like, ag rez will be, regardless whether they pull a building permit or not, but any new accessory dwelling units, and the property is not ag rez, then they will be subject to the.
Didn't we have a square footage, didn't, it wasn't something less than 500 square foot, didn't either pay the fee or was it significantly reduced fee, or now we're just saying it's $1.11 a square foot irrespective of?
If they are pulling a building permit, that's, that's what triggers the impact fees.
Well, yeah, they're gonna pull a building permit, obviously, whether they put 200 square foot or?
Yeah, over 120 square feet, you need a permit.
So there's no square footage exemption for the fee, because again, this is supposed to be based upon traffic impact, that's the other thing, I mean, and we went through this, I see Bob Davison came to the microphone. We've had a lot of discussion about this in the Vineyard community, so.
Sure, Bob Davison, Division Chief of the County Engineering Division, and certainly there have been state laws that have affected accessory dwelling units, specifically the planning process, and what types of reviews certain accessory dwelling units need to go through based on square footage and other factors. Honestly, I'm not an expert in, in all of those, those issues, but what, what does remain is, I'm not aware of any state law that exempts an accessory dwelling unit from an impact fee. So if there's an accessory dwelling unit, and it's determined by our building division that it is an accessory dwelling unit, regardless of what planning process it goes through, if the permit is applied for, and it's for an accessory dwelling unit, then the accessory dwelling unit rate does apply. Now, it is a reduced rate. A single-family home pays based upon the dwelling unit equivalents for a single-family home. The accessory rate is based on one occupant in one RD20 unit, so it's, it's a much less rate than the single-family rate, but, but the bottom line is, is that there's no exemption for an accessory dwelling unit related to impact fees.
So what's the percentage, when you use that RD20 apartment dweller comparison versus a single-family home with three bedrooms?
I'll be going from memory, Kamal, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's maybe about 40%, 30 to 40% of the single-family home rate.
And that's irrespective of the size of the unit that just applies?
Irrespective of the size of the unit.
So if you're 240 square feet, you're still gonna, where you know the loading's gonna be probably one or two at the most?
Correct.
Okay. But ag rez, we went through that conversation, too, where we had, ag rez was the underlying zoning for a lot of years, and those were existing uses, so those are, those are still.
Yeah, so there is an ag rez exemption for accessory dwelling units, so if there is a ag rez unit that's being developed based upon its, its existing zoning configuration that was in place prior to the implementation of the fee, then an accessory dwelling unit on that property would not be subject to these impact fees.
So if I have a five or two-acre parcel, I have an existing house, and I'm now gonna put an ADU in there, because that was permitted previously, then that's not gonna charge for?
Right, just these fees, though, there may be other county fees that would apply, but, but not, not the fees that are before you today.
Okay. All right, that, that helps. And then just one other question back, too, because I know we're gonna get into a motion in just a moment, that we're, you say there's a five-year update, and as it relates to the grade crossing, how is it that in the context of a motion, we can get that back for some discussion about how that fits in the overall matrix for development for the area, but also how it's gonna be paid for, and, you know, what we're looking at on that scale? I'm not, I don't wanna wait five years for that.
I think when we will be ready, we'll bring that item back. I think what Kamal meant, that the overall fees will be five years.
No, I know, now, so is it?
But anything prior to that, as we get the work done, we'll put it on the agenda, bring it back for discussion.
Okay, so I guess my, my question is, though, for emotion purposes, if, you know, a motion were to adopt the staff recommendation here, but to get a, a report back in six months, or nine months, or, again, I don't want this lagging because?
See, I don't, I don't have a timeline for that, but I think if you wanna put in the motion, that we do know we have to come back to you to have that discussion. That was made very clear this morning.
Right, I know, I get it, I know that was, I just, I just wanted to put it in the context of motion, because I think it's an important reference point for, you know, where we leave this today, and, and so could we anticipate, it would be in six, nine months?
So we are, now that, once this is approved, we're moving on to the trigger discussion. It is in the developer implementation plan as a trigger, but for an at-grade, that's what's driving the discussion. We hope to be back to the board by January is what we've set, in January, what we've set for the trigger discussion. I think that will lead to the conversation about delivering and the timing, and certainly that a particular improvement will be part of that discussion.
I think so, President Serna, we do, I understand the need to put a date. I think what I was cautious about is that I don't wanna have a date that we miss, and we get an expectation, but it's very clear to us, I think the clerk's notes are gonna be very clear, that there's an expectation that we will be back to this board to have that conversation, so if you can give us some flexibility on the date, that would be appreciated.
That's fine, and I think what Ron talks about, because there are triggers for, you know, lane improvements, for other pieces, that were all a part of the overall consideration, this being one of them, so I guess I, that would be sufficient to bring it back in the context of that discussion, but also with a little more robust, you know, development information behind it, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
And I would move, I would move staff recommendation, with understanding we'll come back on the discussion on the water.
Second. Motion second, please vote.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote. Item 40 is the County Service Area One. Conduct public hearing on the fiscal year 2019-20 service charges. Confirm the written report and adopt service charges for fiscal year 2019-20.
Hello, Board, Russ Childers from the County Department of Transportation. My slide presentation seems to have gone missing in action, so I'm gonna do this the old way. I'm gonna speak for a couple of minutes, and then let your board ask questions.
Looks like we got it back up.
You have slides on.
Oh, we found it. Outstanding.
You could still do a shorter verbal presentation. Be okay.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about slides.
Don't worry about the slides. Let's see if I can make it go forward now. There we go. We're asking that your board open the public hearing that you set back in July, receive public testimony, close the hearing, and adopt the resolution in front of you that sets the County Service Area One rates for fiscal year 2019-2020. Briefly, County Service Area One funds maintenance and operation and electrical cost of streetlights and highway safety lights. The service charges for highway safety lights for residential street and safety lights, and for, street and safety lights for non-residential properties, these were fixed in 1997 by a proposition passed. These cannot change, so safety, street and safety residential, and street and safety non-residential that have existed for many years, they do not change, they will be the same in 2019-2020. Back in 2006, your board created new service charges for new developments. They were enhanced and decorative street and safety light charges. These service charges do include an inflation factor. We are using the inflation factor from the Bay Area, it's 3.5% this year, so these service charges, as shown for 2019-20, are increasing 3.5%. Briefly, the streetlight retrofit program, we began in 2011. We've retrofitted about 20,000 streetlight luminaires. We've totaled about $7.7 million in grants and loans. We're paying back the loans from the energy savings that, that the change out of the lights have given us. We have about 2,000 streetlights still to be retrofitted, somewhere in the vicinity of about $800,000 to do that, and we don't have a financing plan yet for that work. Retrofit program reduced response time to trouble calls, we've got fewer dark lights, we have eliminated the road fund contribution to CSA One, and at some point, the savings can pay for future luminaire replacement programs. So the action today, we would like you to take is to open the public hearing, accept testimony from the public, close the hearing, and adopt the resolution setting the 2019-2020 service charges for County Service Area One. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? All right, and we will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this item at this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move, I just had one comment, though, if I could. I wanna thank our staff. I know that, as Russ pointed out in his representation, that I think response time to lights that are out, and certainly, I think, the energy savings through the work that staff did, obviously with partners, and securing dollars is, is really paying good dividends, and I, I know a few years back, we were scrambling because of vandalism, but also just the ability, because of some of the costs associated with some of the repairs, but it is a safety light, and certainly a safety element, and being that today is National Night Out, I think, again, just further emphasizes that the importance of, you know, of lighting the neighborhoods, and certainly in our intersections and roadways throughout the county, so, again, I wanna thank our staff for their work. I move the staff recommendation.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Item 41, authority to establish new programs and fees, adjust existing fees, execute multi-year revenue agreements with the Sacramento County Hospitals, and the Emergency Medical Services Program, and amend the agreement with the Permanente Medical Group by $48,873 from $73,627 to $122,500.
Good morning. Sandy Damiano, Deputy Director, Health Services, and I'm here to represent this item today, which I don't have a PowerPoint for, and will be pretty brief this morning. Basically, we are proposing these new EMS programs and fees because of two primary reasons. We have some We have some new state-mandated hospital programs. We're doing some optional stakeholder programs, and we have a funding shortfall that we need to address. The fee package before you addresses both putting us in compliance with the state requirements, as well as taking care of our funding problem for this next year. When we looked at part of developing our fee package, we looked at the program requirements. We compared other local county EMS agency fees. We allocated staff time. We met with stakeholders several times, and we had our cost methodology reviewed and approved. The programs added included the STEMI and stroke programs. These are programs that look at hospital, prehospital care to hospital care for patients suffering from stroke or heart attack. We also added the Emergency Medical Responder Program, which is a lower level than the EMT, which was requested by our volunteer fire department, and we added the optional scope for safety personnel Narcan, which is treatment for the opioid crisis. We are now getting that program formalized. We had a series of five stakeholder meetings, which were very helpful. We had very robust attendance in the beginning of those meetings. The attendance by the time of the last meeting, the end of June, was just very few people, mostly hospital providers with one prehospital provider. As a result of our stakeholder feedback, we did a number of things. We reduced the fees pretty considerably. The hospitals requested that we reduce the out-of-county fees for hospitals, which we did by about half. We also reduced other hospital fees. We reduced the emergency medical responder fee, as well as the Narcan fee. In order to make those fee reductions work, we had to eliminate our request for a full-time new employee, and we had to eliminate some other programs that we would have liked to have had for this next year. Our stakeholders, in addition to that feedback, recommended we form an emergency medical advisory group, which we thought was a very good idea. We actually had our first convening of that work group last Friday. We had good attendance. They wanna meet quarterly to work on data for the prehospital-to-hospital care, which is basically, will help us elevate, I believe, the quality of care in our county, and look at fiscal sustainability in future years. Lastly, we plan to publish our first annual Emergency Medical Services Report, which will describe the services in our county, the context for EMS services, and provide data. That will be a basis for future reports. Any questions?
Any questions with the board? Is, I have no public comments on this. Is there a motion?
The item.
Moved by Supervisor Serna, second by Supervisor Peters. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Item forty-two is the proposed plan for available Mental Health Services Act funds.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Boards of Supervisors. We're here to announce a robust plan to utilize unspent funds from the Mental Health Services Act that's been approved unanimously by the Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee for the County, and the Mental Health Advisory Board has dealt with it as well. As you all are aware, from our individual conversations, there are a significant amount of funds unspent, and our boards, our advisory boards have clearly made it clear that they want this money spent in larger amounts. So, I've charged Ryan Quist, Dr. Quist, our new Behavioral Health Services Director, with aggressively pursuing a plan to spend the money on much-needed services. Next, sir. So, here's where we stand at the end of, as of July one. The bottom line is the bottom line. CSS funds are community services and supports. Those are for things like full-service partnerships, crisis residential programs, regional support teams. The PEI funds are prevention and early intervention. Those are for things like suicide prevention programs, bullying programs, mental health first aid, collaborative courts, and innovation. The INN funds are for exactly that, innovative system-wide type activities. At the end of this past fiscal year, we had eighty-three-point-five million unspent from CSS, twenty-seven-point-nine from PEI, and fourteen-point-seven million from innovation, coming to a total of one-hundred-and-twenty-six-point-one million unspent dollars. That does not include the fourteen-plus million in prudent reserve. That is off, in prudent reserve land, if you will. So, with this plan, we plan to increase funding on each of these three different areas in the following way. CSS expansion will allow us to do what our boards, advisory boards, have been encouraging us to do, which is fund as much on the outpatient side as possible, and not as much on the inpatient side. So, we're using some of the MHSA funding to cover some of the CSS programs, freeing up realignment and funding for the inpatient psychiatric hospital beds. This is important, because as you guys know from the last year or so, we've gone from, the last four years, we've gone from twenty-seven million to forty-five million in inpatient psychiatric bed days, bed costs, and we've come to you every couple of months for an additional amount of money. We're trying to be realistic and be upfront, and this is gonna cover the inpatient psychiatric beds for the next couple of years by freeing up realignment money, by putting some of the MHSA money for these expansions. We are, in addition, expanding housing treatment, board and cares. We're putting twenty million dollars into housing, one time only. That's one time only, so it's not an ongoing sustaining effort. And so, we will end up spending, well, I'll get to the amount of money in a minute, but that's the CSS expansion. Next. The prevention early intervention expansion, we're gonna expand existing programs that have been working well, the mobile crisis support teams, which you're aware of, foster youth supports, and other existing PEI programs, and we are introducing, next, a new proposal system of a competitive bid process for ten million dollars, one time only, time-limited programs. We want this to be open for a much broader array of community providers, not just the regular, the regular crew of people who are contracted with us to provide mental health services. Not that they're not providing good services, I'll be very clear, they do, but we wanna open this up to more community-based organizations, and to target things like trauma-based care and ACEs-type programs. So, that process will begin shortly, actually with your approval, and we will be talking with you much more about that as time goes on. Finally, innovation. This is sort of, we're looking to the MHS SOAC, which is the State Oversight and Advisory Committee. They have to approve our plan, but we'll be doing an expedited planning process, because we need to spend this money, at least right now, within the next year? Year and a half?
We need it approved by June.
We need an approved plan by June in order for it not to revert. This is one of the dangers of having this kind of balance on the books. We need to make sure it doesn't revert, and so this tends to fund system-wide innovations. It could do something like criminal justice collaboration. It could do things like strengthening full-service partnerships, but we'll also leverage multi-county programs, which I know many of you are interested in pursuing, that brings, leverages their resources as well as ours. So, where's the bottom line leave us? If you look at the bottom line, again, of the two thousand and twenty-one budget years, budget year, we will have a balance left of thirty-six-point-four million of CSS, without counting the fourteen million, which we're gonna have holding aside. Fourteen million of the twenty million for housing is gonna be held aside, because it will probably take longer to put it into action, and we have to account for it, and where's Britt? But we have to account for it. So, that'll be twenty-two-point-four million. We'll have twelve-point-three million in PEI funds left, and oh-point-three million in the innovation funds, so that will be about thirty-four million. So, we've gone from one-hundred-and-twenty-six million of unspent funds down to about thirty-four million. This is our big opportunity. It's our kind of one-bite, or two- or three-year bite of the apple, to try and do what we need to do, to decompress the current system, which is overloaded in terms of inpatient beds, and that has been causing two problems. Number one, it's backing up care into the emergency room. I'm sure you guys have heard from your dignity and Sutter and Kaiser and UC Davis folks in your districts, that the emergency departments are overwhelmed by fifty-one-fifty involuntary committed folks, who they don't have beds for, or they end up coming out of the, out of the emergency room. Again, they don't have beds, and they either end up in jail, or they end up back readmitted. And this is a way of decompressing the inpatient psychiatric beds by having, by expanding our CSS services and our prevention early intervention services, to keep people from going to the inpatient psychiatric hospitals, and with some board and cares well-regulated, for example, as a potential for other CSS expansion, be able to step them down from inpatient psychiatric beds more quickly. So, this is our bold attempt at trying to spend the money in an appropriate way, providing prevention early intervention services with community-based providers, expanding our CSS, treating realistically the amount of inpatient psychiatric care that we provide, that we have to provide, and hopefully reducing that and having more upstream care and services available for our constituents.
Are you done?
I'd be done.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
My question relates to the ten million, the competitive one-time funding, and I'm concerned that funds that are one-time funds, I'm not sure you can put them to work that quick. I don't know how you can put them to work quickly and have them have a lasting, ongoing impact, and so I wanted to see if you could clarify, are those capital improvement funds that will like, help an organization in the community to build a facility that they can continue in an ongoing, what kind of competitive, what does that look like?
Here's a perfect example of one. It's really more service capital, if you will, if you can use that sort of a term, and that is, for example, an entity, a community-based organization doing trauma-based care, wants to get the high school and the middle schools in their area trained, having their staff, the school staff, trained in identifying ACEs, you know, adverse childhood events, and providing trauma-based care, and that is training, so we're basically training the trainer, or training the staff, and that's handing it, handing it over to them, so that they can do those services in the schools. Similarly, with mental health first aid, training entities to be able to do that. So, that's what we're looking at, sort of like service capital, if you will. This is not ongoing programs.
So, they'll know it's, like, it's gonna be a one-year funding, or it'll be, will it be two-year?
Maximum two-year, as we're looking at now, and it would be part of the RFP process, that'd be what they'd be bidding on.
Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Billenson. I guess I'm curious that earlier on today's consent calendar, we had basically authorization to submit application by Department of Human Assistance for ten million dollars in flexible housing monies to, again, serve, probably some overlap, those that are frequent users of, obviously, the criminal justice system, but certainly those that end up in the hospitals and elsewhere. And so, they're seeking ten million dollars of, to, for permanently supportive housing, again, not necessarily the entire population we're talking about here by any means, but you've got a good sum of money set aside. How is that being, I guess my question is, how is that being coordinated to use? Because there's other funding streams too, and they're multiples, probably, you know, a half dozen or more, and some of them, you know, recent legislation, so, kind of, just, if you could take a moment, Peter, kind of tell us how, how those fit, so that we, you know, we're getting the biggest bang for the buck, but also expanding, obviously, the service, delivery, and hopefully helping people in need.
Right. What we've been trying to do is look at what different types of homeless folks need different types of housing, and that's the buckets that we've been talking about. I think I've talked with each of you during our introductory meetings with Dr. Quist.
Right.
And so, it's trying to get the right services for the right people, at the right place, at the right time, and we've been making many, much greater, stronger efforts under Bruce, under Bruce's leadership, putting together the homeless cabinet, if you will, which I think is really important. I also think that we need to be much more coordinated with the other entities in the, in the county that are providing, providing homeless services.
Is there a way, I guess maybe to my question then, I assume there's a way, to get a brief or a briefing, maybe even before this board, you know, wherever we are with that, I mean, you've got SHRA involved, you've got DHA, DHHS, obviously, you've got mental health funding coming down, you've got other funding coming to, you know, county, but certainly cities, and again, we're, you know, a primary, obviously, we're the service provider when it comes to, certainly to behavioral health services, and, you know, programmatic funding for a lot of these things. Again, I'm certainly encouraged by getting some of these dollars actually back into the community, but on the housing side of this, because, you know, it seems to be a focus, every time, you know, you turn a page or turn on the television, people talking about, you know, housing for a variety of folks, but certainly in this arena, not just homeless, but certainly those that, you know, have need for other supportive services, how do we get a kind of a coordinated handle, so we as board members, but certainly the community gets a sense that, you know, all these funding, and that we, and that we know for certain that there's a coordination going on, both now, but looking to the future? So, I guess I'd like to bring this to Peter, to Ryan, whoever...
I think what we are planning on this fall, as a lot of these programs are coming into place, is to come back to the board, have a broader discussion. As you know, SB two funds are coming in.
Right.
Work that we're doing on our own homeless initiatives. So, we plan on coming back to give you a comprehensive report back on where we are.
Yeah, and I think a clear delineation, showing these funding sources, either known or those that have been applied for, including our own sources, obviously, we have a housing trust fund, and we have, you know, we have monies that are collected.
We're just waiting on some more data to come in for our own initiatives, but we plan on coming back to the board and have that discussion in a workshop setting.
Okay, and if we could have a one- or two-pager that just, funding sources, and again, you know, who's overseeing that, and where, and making sure that coordination is in place.
If I might add, Supervisor, one thing we can also add to that presentation, is what's happening with this new funding coming down from the state, it's part of the governor's budget, because there's active work underway to try to coordinate that, put it into the mix, so we'll include that as well in our discussion.
Because you have, and also, there's no place like home, and you have other initiatives...
There's a lot of moving parts to this.
Okay, a lot of moving parts. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we, I'm just dovetailing on that. There are so many programs and so many moving parts, it would be nice to, because we get it piecemeal, as you guys come in and want us to approve a certain application, or accepting an award, or, it would be nice to have in one place a real comprehensive, this is what we're doing on mental health and homeless programs.
Totally agree.
We'll do.
Okay. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, first, I'm glad, Dr. Billenson, you mentioned service capital. I think it's a great term, I'm gonna steal it and use it from now on, but, but just in response to, I think...
Paint it up.
I think in response to the question that Supervisor Frost rightfully asked about the, kind of the immediacy of many of the needs that we have in our community, and the fact that this is a revenue stream that we're fortunate to have, it's fairly continual, and there's a lot of eyes looking on the, you know, the speed at which we're applying these resources, but I'm glad you mentioned ACEs and trauma-informed care, because that, to me, is one of, one of the best examples that we have, where I think you get along, a lot of bang for the buck, in terms of the training the trainer, and getting ACEs protocols set internal to the county, but external to our partners, and everyone kind of singing off the same songbook in terms of that particular tool. And I think it's, I just wanted to make the comment, that I think it's just a great example of, while it may seem like we think oftentimes in terms of long-term expenditure, only taking the form of something that is a, is a practice that has to be long-term in itself, this is not one of them. This is something where you could actually get people up to speed on a very important new protocol and practice in a short amount of time, and it stays with them, it stays, it stays applicable, and so I'm glad you cited that example. And then just to add to what Supervisors Natoli and Kennedy just mentioned, and to put a finer point on things, because I feel the same way, as probably every member of this board, that, that there are so many opportunities that we have in light of the tremendous challenge that we also have when it comes to homelessness, in terms of how best to devise an architecture to, to address this complicated subject. I think when you come back and have with a report to the board, or it's in a workshop setting, I wanna hear and see a great deal about, not just what we're doing unto ourselves as a county, but how are we actually going to be partnering with the City of Sacramento and the other six cities of the county? How are we gonna be... How are we going to be partnering, partnering with other adjacent counties in our six-county region? How are we going to be partnering with school districts? How are we going to be partnering with the plethora of other governmental and non-governmental, you know, entities on the subject? If we come back and have this workshop, and all we hear about is kind of the universe of the county, that's going to be immediately, at least in my opinion, will be very short-sighted. So I would encourage you to think carefully about the development of that report back or that workshop, but please make sure there's ample, you know, discussion, presentation on what our opportunities are as it relates to working with other partners. Because many of these other partners, quite frankly, they too have the same opportunity to acquire their pot of, of resources, their SB2 funds, for instance. And so, you know, maybe there's economies of scale that we would otherwise be missing in terms of opportunities to do like, you know, permanent supportive housing, that could serve common constituencies between cities and counties. That's what I, I hope we hear back when we, when we get that. And in fact, I'd like you to, at some point, tell us that you've, you know, had a lot of opportunity to discuss with your peers in those other governmental agencies, what they're doing, so that we have a very thorough understanding of, of kind of the comprehensive opportunity in front of us.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Thank you. You mentioned training for high school children, mental health?
Actually, for high school staff.
To staff, yeah. I'm sorry, I missed that word. But what kinds of things will they be, I mean, that training, what are they taught to look for? Are they taught to look for mental health problems in general, or specifics? I mean, you may not know that.
This is actually just, we were just, this is one group that is interested in applying for the RFP. We have not obviously let the RFP yet because we haven't had your approval. And this is just different, but there's been a wide range of interest in applying for prevention and early intervention type funds for these kind of programs of training. So in that case, for example, you'd have the counselors from the school, as well as some of the teachers, trained on identifying ACEs, adverse childhood effect experiences, and how to deal with things in a trauma-informed manner. I'm just sort of playing, I'm kind of, it's off the top of my head here. But there are going to be different programs that, again, bring service capital to bear, and there'll be, it'll be a process that I am not approving, you know, I'll just sign off on the end, it's an RFP process, so I don't know exactly what they'll be applying for, but it will be programs that qualify as prevention and early intervention. That's not a great answer to your question, but.
No, but it sounds like you won't have an RFP with specific things that they'll be looking for, they're going to propose that they look for certain things?
Yeah, yes.
Correct.
And I'll say, I went to, I was at the MHSA Steering Committee meeting when this came up, and all of the providers were very appreciative of that approach, and not being so prescriptive and boxing them in, and let them get creative and show us what they got.
Right. And I made sure to tell Ryan, which he has absolutely been doing, to work on an agile process to get the funds out quickly.
Thank you. And the idea is that you are not going to the, all the usual nonprofits that we're working with, but you're opening this up to, you're looking for new ideas in the community?
Absolutely.
From all the small organizations, from the underserved communities?
Yep.
And does that, does it also, will it also create some possible opportunities for juvenile diversion? And we have some partnerships with our jail and some of our shelters that are actually helping our inmates as they're transitioning out to help them to be more successful? Those are working well?
Yeah. The RFP will be broad in terms of both prevention and early intervention, that certainly would be something that would be applicable. I can't guarantee that that specific one will be funded, obviously, but yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have one speaker's card on this, and I'll also say, I'm in a complete agreement with Supervisor Serna and the need to continue to look at, you know, how we solve this problem from a Sacramento County entire basis, and that means working with the other jurisdictions. I know that Dr. Bealenson understands that. I did speak with leadership in Matoma County, Multnomah County, I can never say, in Portland, who have been really focusing on that, and they have expressed to me that their successes from a county perspective have only been possible because of the greater coordination that they now do with all of their other jurisdictions. So I can't agree with the need for, for that coordination more.
We do have one member of the public that would like to speak. Leslie Napper.
Thank you, Chair Kennedy and Supervisors on this board, thank you so much. I, my name is Leslie Napper, and I am co-chair of the Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee, and a mental health consumer, a native Sacramento County. And I'm here to support the plan for the Division of Behavioral Health to move forward with the funds, the MHSA unspent funds, on behalf of the committee. The Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee comprised of stakeholders from various disciplines. We have Department of Education represented, we have law enforcement, we have mental health courts, we have the juvenile courts represented. We also have, the veterans are there, we have members from our homeless community that are there, Asian community, Middle Eastern, faith-based, African-American, Spanish-speaking. And we also have consumers, as in myself, representing adult consumers, older adults, TAY, youth, LGBTQ plus is represented, plus plus, excuse me. And, and there are many more that I'm missing, I'm quite nervous. We deliberately, deliberated thoughtfully over giving the Division of Behavioral Health the agility to move quickly on these unspent funds. In particular, the PEI and the innovation dollars. And so we voted, I believe unanimously, for the Division to move forward, with putting out the RFPs to the community quickly. There was concern about can we use them for capital funds? And there is a very broad RFP to let all in that are interested, and so we're looking forward to how the county develops the language and the RFPs. But there was a lot of input, and not just from the Steering Committee members, but also there was significant community input as well. And so we use that as our MHSA stakeholder process, because we're moving quickly with giving the agility to move quickly on these unspent funds. So I'm here in support, in hoping that the, you supervisors will go ahead and allow the Division to move forward. I would be remiss if I didn't address my concerns. Supervisor Serna knows me a little bit well. And so I would, one of my, couple of my concerns are, in particular to the PEI funding, is that is limited? And when we look at the 2021 numbers, and we see that there are numbers there, if we're going to put the monies out, and we're seeing it's time-limited, as a layperson to see those additional funding is going to bring up concerns, why can't we extend it a little bit more? And then the other concern is, and this is the main one for me, is in 2021, will we be at risk as a county of having to restructure our adult system of care by putting these dollars out to the community, which we sorely need it? We need it, and it may be just enough to get the services that we need in the community to reduce the, the time that consumers are spending, or having to go to the ER, or involved with law enforcement, having to go to jail, other alternatives. We know that community-based services, or supportive services, do help us. And so I'm concerned about that. We, we do not want, as a consumer, absolutely do not want what happened the last time our county restricted our adult system of care with the budget crisis of 2009, 2010. We do want to avoid that. So I hope that the county and the supervisors are thinking thoughtful about what we're doing with this 2021 budget, looking forward. And also encourage the county and Division to consider, particularly to the PEI funds, to be open about what you mean when you say time-limited. We might have those gold nuggets, those gems that are really serving the community, we're seeing amazing outcomes, to allow the agility to consider sustaining.
Can you start to wrap up, Leslie?
I am wrapping up right now, as I'm bowing down, and saying, thank you so much for your time. One more thing, too, is African-American community member consumer, to consider, if we're moving quickly on these funds, to also please, we have thought thoughtfully about putting services out for the African-American community through ad hocs. If we can please get those RFPs out as well, and consider also enhancing those programs with these funds. Thank you so much for your time, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the time you put into your work on the commission. I have no more cards, Supervisor Frost.
We have one more person from the community that forgot to put in a card.
Okay.
Will she be able to speak?
And we recognize the Chair of the Mental Health Board.
Thank you. Ann Arneal, Chair of the Mental Health Board. We, of course, are appointed by you to advise you and the Division of Behavioral Health Services on mental health matters. The Mental Health Board supports the agile strategies for planning and stakeholder input that the Division of Behavioral Health Services has established for these unspent funds. We do support the goal of expending these unspent funds for the CSS, PEI, and innovation components. The proposals in the fiscal year 2018-19 Plan Update for CSS expansion for the $10 million in PE, in the PEI component, and the $9 million in the innovation component, we think are very appropriate, and we support those proposals. Regarding the expansion of the existing programs that they delineated for you, we have not reviewed all of those proposals, but we can support the augmented board and care proposal that was outlined. The number of board and care proposals in this community have decreased from 500 to 10 in the last few years due to inadequate reimbursement for providers. An augmented rate would stabilize those beds and would provide needed mental health services to clients in those residences. So we think that's a very important proposal. Finally, I want to note that the Mental Health Board has made recommendations for potential expenditures for those MHSA PEI funds. Earlier this year, we convened committees on children and youth, and adults, and older adults, and solicited recommendations from community experts on unmet needs, and developed program recommendations, and most of those recommendations were for PEI funds. We have given the Division those recommendations, and will be submitting that report to you in the next two or three weeks. So we'd like to thank you for hearing our recommendations on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann. Thank you for being here. I have no other speaker slips. Supervisor Frost, did you punch in again, or was that?
Yes, I just had one last question. Over the last year or two, we were told that we have, we have the services, but we don't have a place, we have navigators, but we don't have a place to take them. And I know there's, this is a broad proposal. I'm assuming we recently learned that we could use these MHSA funds in a different way? Is that why we're, we're going down this path now?
These are excess funds that we were found to have, that we've decided makes good sense to put out into the community to provide the services that are necessary. There are navigator, navigator services that are available. This is going to allow us to provide more on the CSS side, more community-based programs that people can be referred to, and hopefully with the PEI funding, decrease the number of people needing to come into programs in the first place.
Basically, it's a redo of the whole system, that's what Peter and Ryan and Bruce have been working on.
I think it's fair to say that the philosophy of the county has changed on this topic, and that there were those who felt like we needed to set aside much more for a rainy day and didn't recognize that it's a storm outside. And so there's a concerted effort to be both fiscally prudent, but also recognize the serious issue that we have right now and the crisis that we're living in, to get those funds out in a more expeditious way than had been in the past. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Yeah, because, I mean, I think we always wanted to get the money out there and get the services as much as we could with the idea that we were going to, if we do set up a program, we're going to be able to continue it. But I have the impression that there's, there's ways that we can use this money now that we may not have known about before, or that maybe new ideas coming in with Peter. But I, I don't think it's a bad thing, I think it's a good thing, and I hope your, your thoughts about prevention and, and training in the, within the community will help potentiate our efforts to, to get a handle on this.
And I do think it's important that we'll come back with this sort of a compendium of what's happening in the region, both on the mental health and on housing side, because they obviously put, on the homeless side, because they obviously pay it together.
Are we still working on those homeless transitional facilities? We got the grant for four. One was going to be in Orangeville, and we got sidetracked. Is that still something we're working on?
Absolutely. And we'll include that in our update.
Because we want it, we just want it in the right place.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the board?
Move the item.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Thank you very much, staff, for all your good work. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, for item 43, I need a motion to drop this item. This was to adopt the amended planning and environmental review fee schedule.
No move.
We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Supervisor Serna, second.
Thank you. You read my mind. Okay, item 44 is the appeal of hearing officer's decision upholding revocation of permit to operate. The appellant is Damian Avalos doing business as North Border Taco at 3721 47th Avenue in Sacramento, California.
Okay, I'd like to see if staff would like to first make, just give us some background, and then let the appellant have.
I can, let me first set the stage for how this should go, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
So I haven't actually seen one of these food license revocation hearings before. I think the most similar thing the board has seen recently would be a business license revocation. The procedure in the county code is not identical. The appeal procedure here provides that the board may sustain, reverse, or modify the decision of the hearing officer. As you may recall, there's explicit procedures in the county code for business license appeals that allows the board to make a decision as to whether to proceed by argument only, consider supplementary evidence, or do novo hearing, although there isn't explicit authority for that. I still recommend that the board make that call upfront here. And I think the recommendation from staff would be to consider this matter on argument only. So I would ask that the board first make a decision on that. After that, I would say that the appellant, consistent with the last hearing we did, the appellant should be have an opportunity to go forward, and then Diana Reese, representing the department, should go with another opportunity for the appellant to respond.
Very good.
So if the board would like to make a, a decision on the, whether to proceed by argument only.
Do you need a motion or just a consensus?
Let's do it by motion.
Okay. Then I will move the staff recommendation to hold this as an argument only.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
The appellant.
You may now approach. Thank you.
Yes, hello, everybody.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, Damian Avalos.
Thank you.
So I don't know where to start, but I'll just start with the.
Mr. Chair, it might help the appellant hear that we did receive copies, just so you'll know, Mr. Serna, we received copies of your written submittal relative to the appeal. We also have the background information in a full report, which you may have a copy of from the Health Department. It goes through chronology, talks about the various inspections, talks about interactions with you or others in your business, and so we have all, we do have all of that. So just so you'll know, if you reference something, we have the ability to either, you know, look to that, and/or you can call attention to it, so.
Okay, I'm just going to go through the, you know, the alleged violations, and just address those one at a time. So there was the Health and Safety Code 113947, basically the safety food certification about the handler's card. So we've had the handler's cards at all times. I have a managerial card that's required, and the employees do have one. At the, for the, because we're a food facility, and we're a rest, like a taco stand, and we're also food trucks. So obviously, this is not about the food trucks, it's about the food facility. At the food facility, it's typically myself. I prep all the food for the trucks, and like, we don't really share our seasonings or anything with other employees. So on, again, at the facility, it's, it's myself and usually my mother that's there. Maybe the reason why we don't have other employees' cards on hand, but we have provided the, the county inspector with the manager cards. For that violation, I do not believe it exists. And I'm going to move on to the next one, which is the Health and Safety Code Section 11399, 113996, the improper holding temperatures. Basically, from what I recall, when the inspection occurred, there was eggshells found outside that were not at proper holding temperatures, that were not cold enough, and we, we don't sell, like, we don't sell breakfast, you know, it's not on the menu. It's something that, you know, we had it for personal consumption there, but, you know, we just discarded it per the health inspector's request at the time of the inspection when that occurred. Also, the rice, there was a violation for the rice. That day, the health inspector came in, I personally was there, and we had the rice, we were warming it up for one of the food trucks that was going out, and the reason it was, I believe it was like 1:07, is we had just probably about 10 minutes prior to the health inspector walking into the building, we were getting it up to temp so we can put it on the truck so they can go out and sell for the day. I explained that to the health inspector at the time, that they were there, and therefore she allowed us to just get it up to temperature and, and, you know, for consumption. So I don't believe there was a violation there also. The next section is the 6.04, 0.021C, that intentionally interfered with the performance of a duty of an enforcement officer. So on January 23rd, when the alleged violation took, said to take place, the facility was closed. We're, the food facility is not a, it's, we tried to operate it as a taco stand, we were not successful. So we have just been using the facility, you know, as a commissary for the trucks. Wintertime, as for us, November typically, the season ends with Thanksgiving. Yes, we do come out, maybe the first two weeks of December, on the trucks, but around Christmas, it's pretty much, it's, it's over. We don't go out. And being a lot of rain this last, this year that just occurred, we, I don't believe we went out all the way until, I can't give an exact date, but it was approximately the beginning of March where we started going out again. We were closed for the winter season. So on January 23rd, when the health inspection officer drove by the facility, again, it was closed. I did take down the placard and light. There's been a lot of back and forth with the landlord as far as us keeping the facility, in light that we have stopped some of the rent payments to make the proper repairs to the facility that we, we needed to do. The broken pipe being one of them, if you guys have seen it on the, on the, on the report, that was one of them, the water pipe, the, the drain pipe, both of those, we've already fixed. I did hold the rent from the landlord so I can make those fixtures. The black water pipe from, well, the sewage pipe that was broken, we did spend $8,000 to get it fixed, and that's been repaired. Also, the broken water line that was broken, we've also had that fixed. Just to touch those, but. But going back to the, to the, the intentionally, the taking down the placard, again, we did have talks of not operating, and we weren't operating the facility at the time. When the inspector did come, we were washing dishes, we weren't preparing any food, we were washing the dishes, but the trucks are 100% self-contained, which we do, we can do all the cooking in the trucks, washing dishes in the trucks. Again, at the time the inspector came, we were washing the dishes, I will say that, but we weren't preparing like any food or anything like, on that day.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Serna. Again, we'll have time to ask more questions, but just on the point, what motivated you to remove the placard? I mean, that's, again, there's a whole lot of things here, you're addressing each of them, but, yeah, I, I've heard your explanation, you didn't really, you just said you were in there washing dishes, you weren't, but the placards are there, they require public posting, require to be publicly posted, and remain publicly posted. You know that, you're an operator, so what would motivate you to take that down?
I, I mean, going back to it, I, I was not going to operate the facility anymore. Being closed, I just took it down. I, I did have a moment there where, you know, I was, again, having a lot of turmoil with the landlord, and I just said, you know what, we're just going to close it down. We were in the process of closing the facility at the time, and that caused me to just take down the placard.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? Were you, at the moment that you actually took down the placard, were you still open?
No.
Even for, for five minutes?
No.
Okay.
We were, we were closed. Even when the inspector came, we weren't open at the shop for business. We did wash dishes, I will say that, but I wasn't preparing food on the, onsite, I wasn't selling food to the public out of the facility at the time. And I didn't mention that to the health inspector that day.
So since that time, just to be clear then, since that time, you've not been open at?
Yes, we have. That, that day, that was actually not January 23rd, we closed that day, and then I say around March sometime, I don't know the exact date, I don't want to quote something, I'm not sure, but on, in March, the health inspector did come, and also, we were washing dishes. We weren't preparing food or selling food, we were washing dishes at the facility. And that, you know, again, I don't know the exact date, but it was around March, and that's when the health inspector showed up and said, you know, why we're open. I explained to her we're washing the dishes. She, the health inspector proceeded to call the supervisor, and she asked me if I was prepared to do, you know, to do the inspection to reopen, if I was ready for that. I said, yes, that's fine. They conducted the inspection, they gave me a green placard, and we moved forward, and that's when I was told that we were going to have a meeting, a conference of some sort coming up soon, and I was going to receive a letter, which I did receive the letter maybe a week after that inspection.
So just to be clear then, to Mr. Serna's question, my initial question, so from the time the placard was issued, and supposedly, you know, was supposed to be in place until re-inspected, you were not open from that time in?
No. I was not open for business.
So from January?
And I'm still not open. I mean, the shop is still not open.
Okay. But January to March, though, you were not open. You're saying not, you didn't serve no customers in that facility?
No. Did, did, did we, like, wash dishes and things for the trucks? Yes, we did.
Yeah, no, I heard you say that. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
You may continue.
Okay, so that, and then now the improper cooling procedures. You know, what we do to, what I normally do to, to cool the food, usually it's got to be done within two hours from when we cook it, if we're going to serve it, you know, let's say for the next day. There's times that we do prep food for the, for the next day, in light that, you know, it can be a big event, or, you know, or so for the trucks. So being that it's, you know, a big deal, is getting the food out to the public on time, you know, not waiting in lines, we do tend to prep a day before. When we cool the food, it's done within a two-hour timeframe. That's what I've always trained myself and my employees. You know, obviously, like chicken, we got to have it at 165, and then we have to bring it down within two hours, you know, meats and other stuff, hot foods, 135, you know, and then we got the two-hour timeframe to bring it down to 70 degrees, and then shortly after, we have to have it at 41 or below. That's usually what I've done. And, and that's, that's, that's it for that one. The improper sewage disposal, again, I mentioned it earlier, the, so for a while, we did have a, when we got into the facility, we had no problems with, with that sewage disposal. And about maybe a month into it, that's when I started noticing from the floors, from the floor sink, water would, you know, would take long. When we used the vegetable sink, the water would take a while to, you know, to flush down, but, and I was like, well, something's wrong here. So immediately, the first thing I did was, what do you do? You call a plumber. I called the plumber. Plumber came out, he snaked it, it would run good for about another, I don't know, maybe about a month or two, and then I, and I noticed it happening again, and then I called the plumber again, and snaked it. After doing it several times, eventually, we had a gentleman, you know, another plumber come in, a different one, with the camera, went in there, and that's when they realized we had a broken pipe, like, into the parking lot. Our parking lot's not that big in the facility. I don't know, I'm guessing, I'm probably about from where the, the building is to the, to the city, to the city street, I'd say maybe about 100 feet, 75 feet, so about 35 to 40 feet in the middle of the, of our, of our parking lot is where we've, the plumber marked out that, it was, you know, we had a broken pipe there.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you right there, Supervisor Frost.
I'm a little bit confused. The, the restaurant, North, North Border Taco Restaurant is the main facility, and you had indicated that you weren't serving food after you received the violation notice, you weren't serving food, it was mainly a storage area for the trucks, you were washing dishes there, but, but you were also preparing food from there for the trucks ahead of time. So there was food coming from the main restaurant to the trucks, and dishes being cleaned going back to the trucks. Am I correct? I'm, I'm just trying to clarify.
Yes.
Because I'm seeing it as.
We, we, we have. When we've done it at the facility, a lot of the times, we also just do it on the trucks itself, because again, they're 100% self-contained, but we have prepped food at, at the facility.
So the, the facility is connected to the trucks. There's food and serving dishes and so forth that are being prepped from that facility to the trucks that are going out and doing business?
Yes.
Okay. So when, were you, were you operating the trucks during that time, or was everything shut down during, when you were, received the violation notice?
We did operate the truck.
But the violation was to cease operations. Is that correct? That's my understanding.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just put a?
Sure.
I just want to dovetail off that. So in other words, you're, you're brick and mortar, your, your facility, your restaurant is closed, does not have a placard up, you're, you continue to prepare food, that food is continued, continues to be offered for sale to patrons vis-à-vis your truck.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
So the placard's off, you're, you're out of your window, your store is closed, your staff continues to prepare food and continues to wash dishes that are only in service to your truck operation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's essentially an unlicensed commissary, but I'll, I'll have staff explain that. If you can start wrapping up, this is a very important topic for you, so I'm giving you quite a bit of time, but if you could start wrapping up, that would be great.
Okay, will do, sir. Okay, so again, the, the disposal, I'm going to be brief, we, after going back and forth with the landlord, we essentially got it, it's fixed, so that's, it's, that's not an issue any longer. Going to the vermin infestation, it's, I don't see it in these exhibits attached that they submitted here, but I didn't see it on my paperwork, I don't know if it's in your guys' but, they're saying there was, you know, a lot, a lot of, like, 15 to 20 roaches. You know, there was one dead and one live on the photo that I saw, just wanted to point that out. But as far as that goes, we did have an issue with the water roaches. Again, I've, I've hired different companies, I've had three so far, and it wasn't to the EarthLink, the last one we had. They came out and they said, in, in our floor sink, in the, in the, inside the restaurant, that, you know, it didn't have, it had the metal top, but it didn't have the, like, a, a screen, a safety screen at the bottom. We installed that, and since we've done that, we haven't had any, any issues moving forward. I just wanted to point that out as well. And then the lack of hot and cold water supply, that, you know, that, again, going back to when the water line was broken, we did have repairs, we did have repairs going on at the facility that were, obviously, we needed to fix the water line, which we did. Because we were having issues with a really high water bill, and we did get threatened by fruit-rich water, I would shut off the water, at the water line in the back, we have like a little shut-off valve, I'd shut it off, and when we needed water, I'd just turn it on, and we'd just, you know, wash our hands, or wash dishes, or whatever we needed to do. I did do that for approximately, I don't, I'd say about a month, until eventually, again, going back and forth with the landlord, I just stopped the rent and paid for it and got it fixed, and bringing that up as well. And so I just wanted to ask, add one last thing, was, you know, the last inspection we had, the health inspector came out, which was the one in March, was the last inspection we had at the facility. We were provided a green placard. All the violations that were incurred prior, they've all been fixed. I, this is again, in my opinion, I spoke with them, we got, we got the green, we got the green placard. I spoke with them, I was supposed to have a meeting with them. I did not go to, I showed up to the meeting. At the time, I did not feel that I should have had paid $402 for a meeting. I admit, I refused to pay, but had I known it was going to come to this, I would have just paid the $402, had the meeting, and I don't think we'd be here today. Again, in light, we had a green placard, and that's the very last placard we've received, not a red. I would think we'd get a red, and then we'd be here today, but I didn't. I received the green, everything has been fixed, there hasn't been an issue to the last health inspection we had, and I just don't understand why now we're here. But again, I do see, because I refused to pay the $402. That's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, just to be clear then, and certainly appreciate your presentation, you addressed, you know, from your point of view as the operator, a number of the things that have been cited here. But on December 28th this past year, basically, you were, your permit was suspended, you were to remain closed, red placard was put up, you weren't supposed to use that facility, whatever your difficulties were with the landlord, or, you know, and trying to get certain things repaired. But, but I, and I heard you say, and I think you've admitted to it, that you continued to operate out of that. You may not, you weren't open as a restaurant, but food prep, whether you could do it on trucks or not, not only were you washing dishes, but you were preparing food. And, you know, there were some, again, both major and minor violations, but basically, you were, that, that was the point, which you were told, up until March 11th, when we revisit, I guess, don't use this location because of whatever violations were outstanding, irrespective of what you'd repaired or not. Yes, explain to me how that works. You know, you basically. repaired or not. I guess, explain to me how that works. You know, you basically go for two and a half months operating out of there. Again, we're not showing up every day to, you know, knocking on premises and to see what you're doing. You know, there's a, there's a honor factor here. But also, again, with respect to the folks that you're, you know, you're serving to, that we're responsible for seeing to, that the, the food handlers and food preppers are, you know, at least doing their best to, you know, you know, comply for a good reason, for public health and safety, for the sanitation conditions for the food prep. So I guess, you know, you being a restaurant operator, offering food trucks, how do you explain that, that you, basically, you've been told after multiple visits, don't operate out of this location? Because of a number of things. Again, I'm acknowledging, you may have tried to address those. But how do you, in, 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 in good faith and go to the public who you're serving out of your trucks, and you're prepping out of this, the location's been closed? Again, how do you rationalize that, I guess? And explain it to me anyway. I guess I need to understand why you would do that.
Going back again, it was, for me, it was winter time. I wasn't open every day. I wasn't, I, I looked at it where I wasn't serving the public out of the facility itself. I'm not saying we prepped every day for the trucks at the facility. I'm not saying, I'm not saying it was okay. I mean, I'm, I'm just, it wasn't every day that I was prepping there. I do admit, there was a couple of times that I did prep there. I'm not saying it was every day.
I appreciate your honesty.
Again, I'm just being honest. Most of the prep has been done on the trucks. Only when it's a massive event, like where, you know, what I call a massive event, we do prep at the facility. And we store the food there because we don't have enough storage in the trucks. Not saying that we had a massive event, we didn't. I mean, the big events don't come till now in the summertime. Winter time is just, we go out very, I mean, being a nasty winter we had, I, I, maybe a handful of times when we went out. But that's, that's what it was.
Just, just one other question, Mr. Avalos, then. So, you know, as a part of this, the backdrop is, is that, you know, food temperatures, you understand them, you quoted right, you know, reading along with you, you know, known by heart. But we, you know, we found, you know, certain things on the time we did visit. And, and then the vermin, can you explain? You know, part of what the problem was, but it wasn't just those that were coming through the drain, the cockroaches. But there were other ones and, you know, multiple occasions were cited. And some of those are minor violations. They don't necessarily result in a, in a, in a, in a red tag, recognizing that that's something that a lot of restaurateurs have to cope with. But, you know, you basically have those conditions. And, you know, now you say they're fixed, but you were operating out there from, since 2017.
Again, I, as far as going back to the cockroaches, I, I mean, I relied on, I mean, I'm not an expert in that field. I relied on, on, you know, the people I hire, you know, that are professionals in that, in that field to fix the problem. After I consistently see the problem, all I can do is fire the guy, bring in a new guy. And that's what I did. And it wasn't to the guy I have now, which I wish I would've found them a while ago, that he fixed the problem.
I guess one other thing, again, you being the operator, you know, what, you know, what it means to prepare food properly and, you know, having hot water and so forth. But if on the day we visit, we see cockroaches dead on the floor, on countertops, or live ones in other, I mean, you're working in that kitchen, I trust you are, or you have people that are working under your supervision. That's something just, I mean, I guess, I wouldn't ignore that. I mean, every day I'd be, whether you were the pest management company or not, you're, that's your kitchen. The kitchen is the one that's under your auspices. I mean, how, how do you deal with that? I mean, and you know, is it, just ignore, ignore it?
No, I never ignored that problem. You know, like I said, I, I hired the professionals. Obviously, I, by me firing them, it demonstrates that I was not satisfied with the job they were doing. I am, I also admit, I got desperate at a time because I'm trying to fix the problem. And, you know, I sprayed the place myself. Just to, you know, we, we gotta, we gotta address this. And that's what I, you know, I did. And again, it wasn't to the guy I have now that, again, I wish I would've found them a while ago.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, if you can wrap up now, that would be great.
Well, that's, that's pretty much it. Again, I just wanted to, one last thing to say, you know, we're here today. The last inspection I had from the health department was a green placard. It was not a red, it was not a yellow. Just shocked that I could receive a green. And here we are today. You know, I could understand if we had a red, a red placard, a yellow, you know, one, and then we're here. You know, we, we showed up, you know, these guys are still not operating sanitarily. Let's shut them down. Let's give them a red and, and, you know, then we're here. But we're given a green from the health department. And now we're here. I, I just, I don't, it's just, I don't get it. That's, that's all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. Question for our counsel. Hypothetically, if, if a restaurateur is found to violate one or a multitude of health code violations, similar to the ones that are under discussion here today, and they don't abide by the enforcement action that a jurisdiction applies. And if they are, if they keep continuing to serve food to the public, whether through their brick and mortar, through, you know, some affiliated means of selling the food, and someone gets very, very ill, to the point of hospitalization, perhaps even near death, and that person ends up being a plaintiff who attempts to sue the restaurant owner. Is that, is that something that is plausible? Is that, am I missing something in terms of kind of what the general legal recourse might be for a patron that becomes ill by way of consuming food from a restaurant that has been cited?
Certainly, a consumer who went in and had bad food would have a, a legal right to sue the facility. No question about that.
Okay. So from, I'm gonna be, you know, I'll just kinda cut to the chase. I'm looking at, through that lens, the lens of the fact that I think we've actually done him a favor by doing, applying the enforcement actions that we have. In reality, what we've done is we've attempted to kinda shield him from being not here, but in a courtroom. And I guarantee you, you wanna be here, not a courtroom. And you, you know, I don't know how you set up your business, whether it's a limited liability company or not. But depending on how it's set up, you could stand to lose a lot more than just your business in a successful lawsuit against you.
Supervisor Frost?
I just wonder if we can receive an explanation on why he received a green placard and, and he's here.
Okay, Supervisor Peters?
Oh, go ahead.
I wanted your explanation.
After. Oh, you want?
I asked her.
I, I figure she's going to make a presentation. So I figure she, yeah, yeah. So I'd rather have as much of the presentation because it may answer a lot of our questions.
I'm gonna hold my request because it's not about her presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, members of the, of the board. I will be happy to answer your question first about the green placard that was issued on March 11th, 2019. That was following a limited reinspection that was looking at the vermin infestation issue particularly, which was the reason for the red placard in December 2018. And the inspector found that, that, at that moment, on that day, that there weren't any live vermin, cockroaches, or flies, or otherwise, that would justify having the red placard. There was a limited reinspection on that date sufficient to, to warrant a green placard. That was in fact, not the last inspection of the restaurant. Another one occurred on March 21st in response to a customer complaint regarding spoiled food. And that inspection resulted in voluntary disposal of the spoiled food and finding of further vermin, not live vermin, dead cockroaches on that occasion. As noted in the board report, cockroaches were found on nine or 10 occasions of the inspections of this facility, cockroaches or flies or both. Part of the problem was apparently the, Mr. Avalos's mother, who was left to run the facility while he was focused on the food trucks, was propping the back door open. And that allowed at least flies to come in. I'm not sure about the cockroaches, how they were getting in, not just through the floor sink. They, they were different. I learned a lot about cockroaches during this. There are at least three different kinds of cockroaches. And some of them are crawly and some of them are climbers. And, and both types were found in this facility. So that was a grave concern. Regarding the permit status, after the red placard was issued and the, and suspending the permit, what the department found on January 23rd, when they drove by, was that the red placard had been removed. And there was a sign on the window said, "Closed today, will reopen tomorrow," suggesting that the restaurant was being used not simply as a commissary, but also as a restaurant during the period of time when the permit was suspended. Additionally, as Supervisor Kennedy noted earlier, this restaurant, by Mr. Avalos's own admission, was being used as a commissary for the food trucks. It was not permitted as a commissary for the food trucks at any point by Sacramento County. And Mr. Avalos was aware of the need for that kind of permit because his food trick, trucks had previously been permitted by Sacramento County with use of a different approved commissary, not this facility, but a different commissary. So he knew about that requirement. And he chose not to comply with that, for whatever reason. I don't know why. When the inspectors went back in March, they did find food preparation happening. It wasn't simply washing dishes. Whether that was food prep for the food trucks or food truck, or food prep for the restaurant itself, doesn't really matter. But that, that was certainly happening. So Mr. Avalos really has shown a pattern of disregarding the law with regard to the regulations. And the other issue, I think Supervisor Natoli highlighted this, that there were a number of serious concerns. The vermin infestation, the sewer problem, the lack of hot and cold potable water, as well as lack of food safety certification and food handler cards on a number of occasions. And nevertheless, certainly with regard to the infrastructure issues that needed to be repaired, or even the vermin infestation, Mr. Avalos continued to operate the restaurant despite these problems, instead of closing the restaurant and fixing the problems so that the public health would be protected. And that is a grave concern to the department. And that was the serio, seriousness and, and the repeated violations. And then the disregard for EMD's regulatory authority, the county's regulatory authority, and efforts to try to help Mr. Avalos come into compliance. All of those were reasons for the department to take this action of revoking the food facility permit at this time.
Okay, Mr. Natoli.
Yeah, a question I have relates to the recommended action, the revocation. In the event the board were to adopt that, what is the period of time before someone can apply to, or seek a, a new permit? Obviously, the permit for this expired at the end of June under the previous license. So are the provisions, I guess, Diana, for, again, to the point you made earlier, and I think it was concerning embodied in some of the discussion here about actually making the corrections, shutting down for a prescribed period of time, whatever that was, do those, and then seeking to get reopened under, you know, previous, you know, inspection regimes. So, so what is the period of time if we, if we take this action today by which the applicant would have to basically, you know, not operate certainly out of that location? And then they could seek to reopen at some point. So is it a year? Is it six months? Is it 45 days? What is it?
He could reapply tomorrow. There are, there's nothing either in the California Health and Safety Code or in the Sacramento County Code that provides for a fixed period of time. If we'd done a suspension, there could be a fixed period of time. A revocation is, is a removal. However, department staff has discussed what requirements they would need him to meet before they would consider reissuing the permit. He can apply, doesn't mean he's going to get the permit. And what they would want to see is a facility evaluation to ensure that any facility that he's using complies with all structural and equipment requirements of the California Health and Safety Code. They would need to see that Mr. Avalos has a valid food safety certification and valid food handler cards for any employees that he is using at the, at the restaurant. The department would want Mr. Avalos and all employees to attend the department's food safety education class, in addition to whatever education they would need to get the food safety certification and the food handler cards. So additional training would, or education is viewed as necessary. He would need to provide a copy of a professional pest control service contract so that there would be ongoing monitoring of the vermin problem at the restaurant. They would want monthly, if a permit were issued, they would want monthly reinspections for a minimum of six months at the prevailing EMD reinspection fee, which currently is $268. If violations were observed and, and they continued, additional reinspections would be needed. Additionally, there would be a penalty of two, two times the price of the permit. Actually, what the California Health and Safety Code Section 114387 authorizes up to three times the permit amount. But they would want two times the permit amount, which would be 25, $2,584. He would not be allowed, and he's not allowed now, to operate unpermitted food trucks in Sacramento County. So Mr. Avalos stated at the hearing that, and he pretty much alluded to it here, that the real focus of his business is the food trucks. If he intends to operate food trucks, using a commissary in Sacramento County, the commissary and the food trucks have to be permitted. Apparently, he does operate the food trucks also outside of Sacramento County. Although, as recently as two weeks ago, one of his food trucks was found operating within Sacramento County. So that is, although that's not the basis for the revocation here, that's an issue for EMD. And in addition, he would need to pay all the fees owed to EMD, which at this time is $686 for the restaurant for reinspection fees and $851 for the food trucks. And those are all inspection fees that have been approved by the board because, as you know, EMD is, has to...
Diane, let me ask you, okay, so, so, but the recommendation we have here, recommended action is just to sustain the order of revocation. Is it then, as you've outlined, I get it about the fees, but, you know, that, that's part of the, the business, you know, plan that Mr. Avalos or somebody else would have to, you know, figure out how they're gonna pay for the fees. But, you know, we, we have this public health element that, you know, at least in my view, comes as the primary, is whether it's customers or, or that he serves out of the truck store at the restaurant site. And so what I hear though, is that because into Krista's opening comments, that this, you know, I can't recall that we've ever done one of these before the board in my, my, my time here as it relates to one of these permits, that the revocation could be, it can be conditional, I guess, or EMD was gonna leave these conditions. But I didn't see that in our staff report, that in the event that we revoked and stood that up, he can, you know, Mr. Avalos could come in today, pay the fees, and start the process all over this afternoon. And that there's no settling the time. There are just these prescribed conditions, which seemed to make sense. So how is, that gets embodied in decision that we were to make today, assuming we sustained the hearing officer's decision. But, you know, Mr. Avalos, if he chose to and had the money to do so, and the will and inclination, could go down this afternoon and make an application to start the ball rolling. But, again...
to start the ball rolling, but, again, I think in light of what has been presented here, certainly the offer of his explanations, you know, I wanna have some certainty around this, because, again, you bring it to the board, we can revoke it, that revoke, revocation can stand for a few days, assuming he can meet all those, all those things that are, would be an obligation under this order. So I guess, Krista, I'm kinda asking, how does that, because I don't, there was nothing framed here that said that, you know, in the event the board sustained this, you know, that it's only good for as long as, until he meets these conditions. I, I didn't see that embodied in any of the staff report here.
Right, so, once the food permit is revoked, he, as Diana indicates, he can reapply, and there isn't a hold period...
Right, start over right now.
...in the county code. He could go reapply tomorrow, but as Diana laid out, there are a number of hoops that he would have to comply with before he would get that permit. Just because he applies doesn't mean he's gonna get it, and it sounds like it would not be an easy task to get that permit. So that is the protection that EMD has, which is to make sure that the permit is not issued unless, you know, their concerns are satisfied, and there are procedures set forth in the county code about inspections and such that EMD can require, so that would be the...
Could we prescribe other conditions in addition to that? Those are EMD conditions, but, you know, it talks about having a pest control contract, well, that contract can, you know...
I might, and I, I'll have to ask Diana or somebody else from EMD to respond on that.
Yeah, okay, again, so...
See something specific in the county code about mandatory food safety education, which Diana had referenced, I don't know about the...
Yeah, how about all other things you've listed, you know, six months' worth of inspections, and paying the fee and so forth. I mean, those are crafted by staff, who've given very thoughtful, you know, reflection on this, but how do those get embodied? And is that part of the recommendation that with the board in revoking this, would, you know, recognizing that Mr. Avalos could reapply, that those are conditions that are, that are instituted by this board as a part of the recommendation, or?
No, no, that would be a separate process.
So we're not, so we're not directing that.
What's before this board is an appeal from the hearing officers revoking of the license. It is not up to the board today to take any actions to conditionally license him in the future, that's a different action that would have to be handled separately.
And, and just to be clear, EMD is gravely concerned, they wouldn't have taken this action. Not only do you not recall, I don't know how long you've been a supervisor, Kelly McCoy has worked at EMD for 25 years, this is...
You gotta be.
I gotta be.
Are we all tied on...
I've got 41 years with the county, but 25 on this board.
Okay, all right, so that's why you don't remember it, because she doesn't remember it either. This is the first time that EMD has taken this action against a food facility because of the concerns. So they would not reissue a permit lightly, okay? And they could impose conditions on the permit. And we have, we have laid out what, what conditions they would consider, but we really don't want that, I mean, even if it could be, we really wouldn't want that to be part of the board action, because we don't know when he might reapply, if there's a different owner. There are a number of circumstances that could change.
Thanks, Diana, okay. Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. Could I ask, Ms. Whitman, this is a slightly different question. What responsibility does the owner of the property have? I mean, Mr. Avalos has to abide by all our regulations, and as we've described in depth today, but providing a building that appears to be uninhabitable with the water and sewer problems, is that something code enforcement should be following up on? I mean, he's, this landlord may lease it to someone else soon.
Right, and I don't know if code has been involved to date, but certainly a referral could be made to have them do an inspection.
Right, we can, I, to my knowledge, code enforcement has not been involved, and, and I haven't actually researched that, but certainly if there are ongoing infrastructure issues with the, with the building...
Well, according to you and staff, there is, there are ongoing issues.
Well, yeah.
I think Supervisor Peters, we, out of this hearing, we are gonna have code go out and check the building.
Okay, I, I, that's great, I mean, but, that aside, that's a separate issue from the appellant, who I think is not reliable to follow regulations by a long pattern of disregard for public health and law, so that's where I am on this.
Do you have anything else?
I have nothing else, unless you have any other questions for me. Thank you.
No questions? Supervisor Frost, is it for Ms. Whitman?
I'm just gonna, I was just gonna make a motion to uphold staff's...
We haven't heard from Patrick yet.
Oh, sorry.
Appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so we have no more questions of staff at this time. Thank you very much.
Do we want to give the appellant an opportunity to respond?
We will give you three minutes to respond, if you would like. If there's no new information, don't feel compelled. Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, then it comes back to the board, I have no, no cards on this, and, and I will say that, you know, I drive by this building almost every day, and, you know, I, when I first saw that this was coming before the board, it was not something I was excited about or happy about, because, as I said, I gave the gentleman a great deal of latitude with time today, because, you know, this is a person's livelihood, and so we don't take these things lightly. It's also a closed operation and business in an area that badly needs business and needs support. So, you know, I, I looked at this very, very, I scrutinized it, looked at it very closely, but at the end of the day, all of those factors and considerations are far outweighed by the concern for public health and safety. I hope that, sir, if the board does end up revoking your permit, that you take it very seriously, and don't just try to apply Band-Aids where there's a hemorrhage, and actually take advantage of what health and safety courses are out there, food handling courses are out there, and you do a better job of monitoring not only your property, but your employees, and following the regulations to the letter of the law, and not trying to skirt here and there, and for a couple of days doing this and that. That's not acceptable. It takes one incident for a person to get sick, and perhaps it could be fatal, and so it's a very serious part of what we do as a county in regulating and monitoring restaurant, the restaurant business. And I used to be in the food industry, and, so I take it very seriously myself. So, with that, I will make a motion to uphold the reg, revocation and approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, so that concludes your morning items, unless you wanna take up your nominations?
Can we do it just real quickly? There's not very many.
Okay, that's item 49.
And, and, Mr. Gill, in the future, when we have hearings like that, can you schedule them after lunch? Okay?
Okay, so you are continuing to September 24th, the Children's Coalition, Casamnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Elk Grove Casamnas Cemetery District, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Pre matters today, we have the Public Health Advisory Board. Mr. Kennedy?
Chief's recommend continuing this item till August 20th.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Ms. Peters?
Please continue to August 20.
Mr. Natoli?
August 20th, please.
Sacramento County Youth Commission, Ms. Peters?
Please continue to September 10.
Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Natoli?
I'll need to continue that till September 10, please.
South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Serna?
Please continue to September 24th.
And, Mr. Kennedy?
Please continue to September 24th.
Okay. And then we have the Sunrise Recreation and Park District Supervisor Frost?
Please, I nominate Elizabeth Gray.
Okay, that concludes your nominations.
Okay, thank you very much, we close session?
Yes, we do.
All right, then, we will recess to close session.